You should be going to YouTube.
Okay, so I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District School Committee to order. We are meeting remotely as per the emergency orders from the governor. So here, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and I believe Mrs. Matson, do you have your flag for us again? And if we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being live streamed and recorded by Templeton Community TV. It's also out on the local cable stations as well. And we thank you, TCTV, for your help in partnering with us to make these meetings available. And let me just see here. Okay, so the first order of business has to do with the minutes from October 21st. I made a chairperson error. When we voted on the minutes, we didn't have a majority to approve them. And because we had a quorum, but it still was four to one, so that's not an actual majority for our committee though. So I would like to go through the motion of reapproving those, the formality of reapproving those minutes so that we do it properly. So we had already looked at these minutes for October 21st. I would take a motion to approve the minutes of October 21st, 2020, as presented.
So move.
I have a motion from, I think, Mrs. Matson, sorry. And do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a second? Were there any questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Marks. Mrs. Robichaud. Mrs. Kojal.
Yeah.
Mrs. Matson. Mrs. Matson.
Yes.
Chartier.
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye, so now we actually have a majority for that vote and those minutes are approved. Our next item on the agenda was to approve the minutes of November 12th. Unfortunately, Mrs. Barney didn't have a chance to get them all completed and before sending them to the committee prior to the meeting. So we'll hold off on the November 12th until the next meeting that we have. Next up, we have Bills and Peril. I would take a motion to recommend to accept the Bills and Peril warrants as presented.
So move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Kojal. And a second, was that Mrs. Matson? Somebody's got really bad static, that was Mrs. Matson. Any questions or comments on the Bills and Peril? Do you know if we broke the vote? Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal? Mrs. Kojal, I can't hear you, I'm gonna skip over you, I'll come back to you in a moment. Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, Mrs. Kojal?
Her screen appears.
She's frozen.
It does appear she's frozen. I'll give one more try and we'll try and get her back on. We do have five votes in favor, so we do have a majority.
Yes.
Okay, I hear Mrs. Kojal now, she did say yes. So we do have, that was unanimous, so we've passed the Bills and Peril. So next, before I go on to our next. Just trying to take those, before we go on to our next. Appearance, I just want to announce who's on the call. For the school committee, we have Mr. Marks, Mrs. Robichaud, Mrs. Kojal, Mrs. Matson, Mrs. Chartier, myself, Mrs. Hughes, and Mrs. Trifolo, I see is just joining our meeting and it is 5:05.
Thank you.
Hello, Rayanne. We have Dr. Kazavant, we have Assistant Superintendent Police, we have Anne Marie Geister, our Business Manager. We also have the Principal of the High School, Colby Young. We have the Assistant Principal of the High School, Janet Brown, just wanna write that down, 'cause I see you, but I didn't write your name down. And we also have a couple of students. I see, I'm just gonna look on my screen, I see Patrick Warden, Abby Bennett, Callie Whedle. And I think that's the three that I see now and we'll get to you guys in just a second, 'cause we'll have an introduction to you. I also see Mrs. Parker is here, she doesn't have video on, but she is on the screen, I'm sure that we'll see her momentarily when it's her turn to speak. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to first Dr. Kazavant to talk about our student representatives and I'm sure he'll turn it over for their introduction.
Well, thank you, ma'am chair. So, good evening, everyone. So this has really been a long time coming, we've been trying to figure out when would be a good time. And we really did want to do this live, but it just, we just don't know when that's gonna happen. So as we started a couple of years ago, we have student representatives to the school committee. Generally, we have two. And, you know, this year, we still have two. But we have a very active group and I believe, and I'm gonna let Mr. Young get into this a little bit, but we have actually some backups to those, to those, to those representatives. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Young, so he can introduce the four in the primaries and of course, the alternates, you know, as they said.
Thank you, Dr. Kazavant. So, Colby Young, Principal of the High School. Janet Brown and I, the Assistant Principal, Ms. Brown and I are incredibly proud to introduce briefly to you the student representatives. I wanna first thank the school committee and our wider community for supporting students being on this committee. Ms. Hughes, in particular, has been incredibly helpful to us in making sure that we have student representation in our district. And I just really wanna say thank you. The students I'm about to introduce to you are, like so many of our other students, an absolute shining light to our community and to our school. And we really could not be more proud of them. So we have four representatives, three of them in attendance today. And as Dr. Kazavant mentioned, the hope is that each one of them will have some face time with you all and provide the committee with excellent representation. Every member here was voted on by an open election by their peers to serve as part of the state Student Advisory Council and then additionally help support our school. And so, without further ado, I would like to introduce to you the juniors first. So as Ms. Hughes mentioned, and then I'm gonna have the students say a word or two, a quick word or two about themselves. We have Ms. Samantha Lovewell. Ms. Lovewell is diligently working this evening, so could not be in attendance, case in point of the responsibility and the dedication. We have Mr. Patrick Warden, who is an 11th grader. Patrick, would you be willing to say a couple of words about yourself?
Uh, yeah, sure. So yeah, Patrick Warden, 11th grade. I'm a. Let's see.
Your interest, Patrick, in what's going well for you this year would be great.
Um, I'm in mostly, you know, AP and honors courses. I really like history, that's probably what I plan on studying later in life, in college and whatnot. Potentially going on to teacher, we'll see.
Just don't breeze over that, Patrick. That's really the, that is a highlight, which you pause and go, I'm going to be a teacher. Let it hang for a minute and then move on, this is, this is an important thing, okay? All right.
Pretty impressive reading collection behind you, Patrick, there. It looks like you're graduate level international relation, Star Wars there.
Yup. I think that's, uh. That's, yeah.
Thank you, Patrick, appreciate that. So as I mentioned, Ms. Samantha Lovewell is working tonight, so I'm gonna move into the 12th grade students. So Ms. Abby Bennett, who will be one of the primary representatives of working with school committee. Abby, could you say a couple of words about yourself, please?
Sure, hi, my name's Abby, I'm in 12th grade, as he mentioned. I'm very active in band and theater. And I also really like doing scouting, so I'm in Scouts, PSA, and Girl Scouts. And then looking into the future, I wanna major in environmental science.
Thank you very much, Abby. And finally, we have Ms. Callie Lewin, also a 12th grader. Callie, if you could go ahead and say a word or two about you, you'd all appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Callie, I'm also a 12th grader. I love to travel, I love to read. And I'm planning, I'm going to the action nurse thing.
I think we might have missed the end of Callie's, did Callie freeze or is that me?
I think she froze.
Okay, great. So, Callie and Abby will be the primary, but we have a system worked out where Patrick and Samantha will also be working with you all. And I just wanna say thanks so, so much for the opportunity to come before you and introduce these wonderful students. Ms. Brown and I are incredibly proud, thank you.
Great, thank you, and welcome to Abby and Callie and Patrick and Samantha. And we're very excited to have you as part of our committee this year, as our student representatives. We look forward to you bringing to us things that are going on in the school and offering commentary. And Mr. Young, I'll circle back with you, we can talk a little bit about what expectations the committee has, just based on what we've done in the past and anything you might wanna change with that. So I could reach out to you and we can talk a little bit, so you can give some guidance to the student reps and have them prepared for our next meeting.
Wonderful, thank you.
Great, thank you, and thank you to our student reps for being here. You're certainly welcome to hang out and, you know, to watch and even have commentary if you do on our meeting. If you have to drop off, if you've got homework and other things, we certainly understand that. But you're certainly welcome to hang out with us for this evening. So thank you. Great, and thank you, Mr. Young and Mrs. Brown, for coming tonight and doing the introductions and for supporting the students. As you know, I'm a big advocate for student voice, so I'm hoping that our reps will have some good voice for us that we can listen to and then react to, so thank you. All right. Next up, we have public input. And as far as I know, there was no public input that came in this, up until this evening, to be read. We will keep an eye on the chat stream and I see there's nothing out there yet, but if some comments come across as we continue with our meeting, if we can address them during the meeting, we will. Otherwise, you know, we'll get to them as soon as we can or respond offline to those public comments. Next up, we have the NDEA and I see Mrs. Parker's smiling face, so I'll turn it over to you, Mrs. Parker.
I don't have much to share out, just the fact that it's, the teachers and students have smoothly transitioned back into remote for a couple of weeks. It seems like it's a little easier this time, now that we've been through it, so hopefully, hopefully it's a couple of weeks and we're back in. But everyone's right back at it today and back to teaching remotely and the students were in their meetings when they were supposed to be today, so hopefully, everything goes well and we can get them back to school.
Great, thank you. And again, I thank everyone, you know, as we continue to say, and I know everyone on the committee says, you know, for all of the work that goes into it's not easy to, I believe oscillate is our word, from one form to another of instruction, and we appreciate the hard work and effort and the struggles that go along with that. And, you know, we just wanna say thank you to everybody, teacher staff, for making that happen and doing it somewhat seamlessly, I say somewhat, because obviously it's tough with everybody remote, but it seems to be working and I'm glad to hear that it was a little smoother this time.
And we have to thank the parents too, for trying to be as flexible as they can, I know it's gotta be hard, especially when you have little ones, but everyone's, you know, doing the best they can and just trying to keep everybody safe.
And that's a very good point, thank you for reminding me that, yes, thanks do go out to the parents, the guardians, and the community as a whole to make this happen for us. So, great, thank you. Next up, we have just an update, a status update on FY21. I'll say a few words and then Dr. Kazavant, if you wanna add anything, there's not much to say. We're still waiting for final numbers from the state to come out. The governor had redone his budget, the House Ways and Means got together, the Senate got together. They're in the amendment process, so they're still voting on that, so there's not much of an update on FY21. I don't know if Dr. Kazavant, you wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am chair, no, there really isn't, I know that we've seen the, you know, the usual list of numbers such as, you know, transportation circuit breaker and those numbers, you know, they'll ebb and flow until, till they actually land on an actual number, so, but you're right, there's a lot more to come, I think they're, that, you know, these trying, they're trying to keep us, you know, they're trying to keep us as balanced as possible or as level funded as possible. I think that, we'll see, you know, because level funded isn't really level funded, because things, of course, costs go up. But yup, we wait, but we're still going to move forward with our budget. Certainly, our expenses are known, or at least, you know, as known as can be, and we'll start, we'll start that process in the very near future, so that way we can get a jump on it like we did last year.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have the Business Managers Report. Mrs. Geister had put out some files for us to review. I will turn it over to Mrs. Geister for any sort of updates or information that she wants to bring to our attention first.
Um, I just wanna talk about the grants a little bit, they're, they're pretty much all going, they're all in full force now. We're kinda concentrating on spending down the one that expires December 31st, that's part of the CARES reopening money. So that's kinda my top priority to make sure that one is on track and doing what it's supposed to be. The other ones are just kinda falling into place, most of them are covering salaries, so there's not a lot to do with them except monitor them. And as you can see from the general fund, that's, it's right on track. We have a good bottom line right now going into sorta like the second half of the year coming up. So we will keep an eye on that and make sure that it's being spent down appropriately.
Sorry, I was muted. Anyone on the committee have any questions or comments from Mrs. Geister on the numbers? Seeing none, we'll move on, thank you, Mrs. Geister, for the update. And I'm sure that once we get probably through December, we'll have a better feel for, you know, what the year will look like, 'cause that'll take us about halfway through. So thank you for putting those numbers together for us. Next up, we're gonna go into COVID updates and any votes if necessary, if we needed to take any. We're gonna discuss the list that we have, transportation, school lunches, athletics, instructional updates, facilities, including the ventilation, so whatever there. I did wanna start with, I think this, Dr. Kazavant, you wanna start with the school lunch topic? Because I did wanna just make a note that the school committee has received a series of letters from staff members with commentary on the school lunch program. And I wanted to be sure that we acknowledge the fact that our staff has sent us information and that we were acknowledging it and also taking it under advisement and sharing it. If the committee, I put the letters out there for the committee, 'cause I believe we all received the same ones. If it's the will of the committee, I'd be happy to read them if you think that would be helpful. What is the, does the committee, would the committee like that, I see some head shaking, okay. So I'm gonna just take a few moments and just read some of the communications that we have received from some of our staff members regarding school lunch. And if everyone remembers, this is about, I believe it was hybrid Phase B, which would be adding school lunches into the school day. So first, I have a letter from Mrs. Mandy Fliss. Good morning, school committee members, I wanted to take a minute to sincerely thank you for all of your hard work and continued efforts for our students and staff this year. You've been faced with difficult budget issues and making decisions for a school district during a global pandemic and you've handled it with grace and strength. Our union has informed us that we're looking to start full days in mid-November and I can't tell you just how excited I am to hear this. As a teacher in the high school and as a parent to a third grader, I believe the students need as much in-person time as we can safely manage. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to give my students some normalcy during these difficult times. Most importantly, I wanted you to know that there are staff who are grateful for the hard work that you and Dr. Kazavant are doing to move us along to the next phase of hybrid. I for one, support that decision and thank you for your efforts. So. Next is a letter that we received. And this one here, this was from the kindergarten team of Jean Tuie, Justine Welch, and Martha Polchapek. Dear members of the NRSD School Committee, we come to you as the kindergarten team with our concerns about moving forward with the full-day hybrid B model that was proposed at the school committee meeting last night, October 21st. We would like you to be aware of our concerns as you make this important decision. First, the later elementary start time, from our own experience as kindergarten teachers and as research shows, all students learn best in the morning, especially the younger ones. This later start time will affect time on learning and student performance. This later start time may also affect our working families in adverse ways. Snack time. At this time, we currently use the cafeteria, two classes at a time, for our snack break. We cannot safely social distance our students for snack time in our classrooms, because they must be six feet apart when eating. If we're to have snack in our classrooms, we'll have to have two separate snacks. Half the class will eat, we will disinfect, and then the other half of the class will be able to eat. Snack time will significantly increase due to this procedure, therefore decreasing time on learning. Lunch. We're concerned about the amount of time it is going to take to serve all students, approximately 45-plus students per grade level, within a 30-minute lunchtime. This will also affect the amount of student, of time students have to eat. We're concerned with the amount of time it will take to properly disinfect the cafeteria between grade levels. With this many students in the cafeteria at once, how is it going to affect contact tracing as well as increased exposure? Paris. Our class sizes continue to grow weekly, when will our Paris be returning to the classroom to help support our students' needs? We're told that we would get them back, but have not heard when. Specials. If we're moving forward to the hybrid B model, will the students be receiving unified art classes? They are currently fully remote now, it's our hope that all students will get the opportunity to experience a truthful day of school and all that it entails, including Title I and intervention services in person. Hybrid responsibilities. Between the planning and the stress, Zoom check-ins to remote kids, the grading, the meetings, and the nine-to-12 instructional videos we make weekly to assist with the weekly packets that are sent home, adding even more to the day seems daunting if impossible. We feel strongly that moving to a full-day hybrid model is not in the best academic interests of our children. As a number of COVID cases rise in the state of Massachusetts, we believe that moving to a full-day hybrid model at this time will put students, staff, and families at risk. We would like nothing more than having all of our students face-to-face for full-day learning. We look forward to when it is safe to do so. Thank you for taking the time to hear your concerns. That was the kindergarten team. This was an email from Denise Moulton, good morning, good afternoon, school committee members. It's been brought to my attention that we're considering a full-day hybrid plan for our district. I'd like to share with you some of my concerns. After 10 days of intense training, we opened schools, we opened the schools, school doors to in-person learners as well as cohort A and B. It took a great amount of time to not only teach ourselves, but the students, the routines, protocols, and procedures. We, the teachers, students, and administration have worked extremely hard to be sure that we are following social distancing protocols, mask safety, and proper cleaning, pre and post-cleaning for every class. These tasks are never-ending and we constantly remind students about the safety protocols. Along the way, a few more trainings such as STAR, CPR, first aid, and Teach Point, all while teaching our students. I do love my job and I am super appreciative, appreciative that I am able to do my job and be able to talk, interact, and teach the students in person and both my cohorts remote as well. I do believe the students feel the same way as we want to stay open. The days, I should have made these, the words bigger, I'm sorry, the days go by so fast, there is no time for the restroom till closing time. LOL. Please know that I'm not complaining, just painting the picture. I do believe after all these weeks of being in school, I feel like it is a well-oiled machine with a few bumps here and there. The students have settled in and finally found their groove, as well as the teachers. My feeling is that if it's not broken, why try to fix it? We're finally feeling like there is some kinda consistency and that feels really good. We're all in this together for sure. I hope we stay the way we are and continue to connect, teach, embrace, and enjoy our days in the scheduled cohort system that we have now. I just want what's best for our Narragansett community. I fear if we move to something with less restrictive guidelines that'll lead us to closing our school doors, and I pretty pleased do not want that to happen. I know this is just one person's opinion, but think of it as a backpack with all our students, staff, and admin inside of it. We're in this together, hashtag it's a gap thing, with my best intentions, again, this is Moulton. This is from Mrs. Michelle Smith, dear school committee members and Dr. Kazavant. I wanna thank all of you for discussing and advocating for a full-day hybrid schedule. The executive board does not speak for all of us, as I fully agree with moving forward to a full-day model. We've done an amazing job thus far keeping students and faculty safe while managing an effective alternative learning environment for our students, and I firmly believe that we can safely move into full days. While I agree with the executive board that we are burning the candle at both ends and have taken on many extra hours of planning, creating all digitally accessible materials, teaching live and zooming at the same time, grading, et cetera. I also feel it is for the betterment of our students to be in person as much as possible. Lunch duty does not have to be complicated, and if staff members feel uncomfortable, they can double up on masks and wear a face shield. It can be done and we can all accomplish this together. It's time to move forward and I appreciate that you are considering a change to the current schedule. This next one is from Ms. Kate Cormier. Dear school committee chair Hughes, this was also sent to all the committee, but this is my specific letter. Firstly, I'd like to thank you for all you've done to ensure a safe reopening for our teachers and students in the Narragansett Regional School District. That said, I'm alarmed to hear that the district has begun to move forward with a plan utilizing full days of in-person instruction as cases of COVID-19 begin to surge in the area. As a parent of three school-aged children, I understand the desire for students to be spending more time in person at school. However, as a teacher at Templeton Elementary School, I find this decision to move forward to be one with little to no substantial benefits and huge risks. This plan is significantly out of touch with the reality that hybrid teaching poses at the elementary level and one that has not taken into consideration the needs and desires of the teachers who are pouring their hearts into reaching every student right now. There are several reasons for which I am adamantly opposed to moving toward full days. The incorporation of lunch within the school day poses a significant increase in disease transmission risk. The website for our nation's Center for Disease Control advises for the closing of indoor communal use spaces. Our cafeteria should be closed basely on that sole, based solely on that recommendation. Furthermore, MIT recently published an article that warns of the inevitable spike in cases through the winter months as people move indoors. This specific article states, "It's now increasingly clear that tiny particles carrying the virus can remain airborne, possibly for hours, meaning they can accumulate in a room until someone breathes them in. It's not enough to simply avoid standing too close to an infected unmasked person indoors. People can be infected by someone who's standing 20 or more feet away, even if they're wearing a mask, and even if the infected person has left the room. That's because the virus can travel further and linger for a longer period of time, building up through the space," end of the quote. To think we would use our indoor cafeteria space to hold dozens of unmasked students who are eating lunches reckless and provides no increase to on-time to time on learning. Finally, the school committee should know how much the workload has already increased for teachers in the hybrid mode. We're overwhelmed and burning out at a rate I have never experienced. Elementary students do not have the developmental capacity to attend to synchronous live streaming of classroom instructions. To that end, many of our in-class learning opportunities cannot be recreated virtually for at-home learners to participate simultaneously. Therefore, we are spending our afternoons and evenings making instructional videos to accompany the learning packets we send home with students each week. We are giving our all and then some to our students, much to the detriment of our own well-being and that of our own families. I invite you to come into our classrooms, shadow us for a day, and then decide if you feel we should put even more on the line by increasing the length of our in-person school day and opening up our cafeteria for lunch. Very respectfully submitted, said Kate Cormier, third-grade teacher at Templeton Elementary School. And then the last one that I have is from Mr. Shay Tower Hughes. Members of the school committee, I hope the events of the last week have made clear that the superintendent's recommendation that NRSD moved to the hybrid B model was premature and ill-advised. Cases of COVID-19. Cases of COVID-19 are on the rise nationwide, statewide, and locally. An unmasked lunch in the cafeteria even at six feet is unsafe for both students and staff. Please do not rush us into something dangerous." Again, from Mr. Shea Tower Hughes. So those were the communications that we've received as a school committee. As I said, I wanted to read them because I think it's important that they go on the record to show that, one, you know, we're paying attention and listening to what everyone's saying, and there would be a record of these comments and concerns. So with that, I'm actually going to apologize and turn it over to Dr. Kazivan to follow that up. And hopefully you can speak to, you know, lunch and then some of the other related issues and items that we have with our COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so I think that, you know, you know, the benefit of hindsight, you know, when we, when we developed our plan so many months ago, you know, hybrid A and hybrid B really was born from the necessity of making sure that we, that we had planned accordingly, but again, not to bring up old bad news, but you know, the 1/12 budget was also something that we, we were contending with at the time in terms of staffing and, you know, so we knew that we had to, had to wait. Or at the very least. So you fast forward to November, which, you know, we've, we've talked about, and we've, we've created a plan for, for lunch to ultimately, you know, extend the, the in-person time through, through the balance of the day, whether you be cohort A or B. And because, one, you know, we feel that obviously when kids are in school, it's the best thing for them. Two, we think that it can be done safely, and there is a body of, I would say, evidence, research, et cetera, that says that. So now, you know, what we've, we're certainly not going to embark on this, you know, haphazardly. So we, we understand that right now, we've, we have a situation in which we're, we're in full remote, which we can talk about in a few minutes. But the local, if, you know, it's funny, because you never, I never compare us really to anyone, quite honestly, and but, you know, we do have neighbors around us, or, you know, our fellow districts whom are offering lunch, whether it be at the elementary or at the high school, whatever they may have in person. And they've been doing so since the very beginning, you know, you know, since the very beginning. And although when folks, when all of us go in and out of remote as we, as we all have over the past, you know, three, four months, what we understand is that, from our neighbors, is that it wasn't because of lunch. You know, so I think that we, it's, it's inevitable that we're going to go to lunch. Why do I say that? Because, well, one, it's in our plan, two, it's, it's the right thing to do. And three, we need to prepare, quite frankly, to be ready to provide lunch for, for the time when we are either asked politely back by the state or told abruptly by the state to resume, you know, full days, which I don't believe is, is, is on the way. I don't believe that we are, that's going to happen anytime soon. But the fact of the matter is that it's coming, and that's all of our goal. So what we've done and what I've promised to do, and so far have almost completed the entire plan, is that we have administratively mapped out lunch in both schools, both at Templeton Elementary and at the Middleland High School, utilizing both, well, at the, at TES, the little bit of their gym, but most of their cafeteria. And up at the middle high school, a portion of the middle school gym and the cafeteria. The numbers are fairly low. And each, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but we, we administratively sat down, we, we mapped it out, we talked to the food service folks, of course. Then we set up the mock again and showed the Board of Health, et cetera, and to see what they thought about the plan. You know, there was, there were no issues from there. And my next, our next step, and I was going to do it actually tomorrow, but we were a little busy yesterday to get the information out. So what, what I plan to do, getting all things being equal, is that next Wednesday, invite any of the staff who can, who can make it out. Of course, we'll send this information out in the school committee to see what the plan that we have right now, get some feedback. You know, again, more, more brains are better than one, and if we can, if we could tweak something, if we can improve something, we will. Again, without seeing it, I mean, you, you need to see these, you know, six foot apart and facing in one direction or facing a wall or et cetera. So what I, what I've asked folks whom, and I appreciate, I do, I do appreciate the feedback. It, it inevitably is the next step. We haven't made any, we haven't made any rash decisions so far. They've all been based on safety, both for staff and for student. We've been abundantly, you know, we've made those decisions. The abundance of caution, I'm almost sick of writing that, and I have to think of something else. Been abundance of caution, but we've, we have done that. And this is just the next step, quite frankly. You know, again, Winchonnan, Monty Tech, Gardner, Ash West, Quabin, Athol. One school or another, if not all, depending, are having lunch. And so we, not because they are, but because it's good for kids, we're going to have lunch as well. So we're going to continue that, we're going to continue those plans, and we're going to do so, you know, fidelity and with safety in mind. But everyone is going to have a voice, and so far, we just haven't, we just haven't been able to get to the Wednesday where folks can, you know, to invite the school committee and of course the teachers in to, to do that. Oops, pardon me. I'm going to say this, though. Because we'll get into my spiel a little bit later about going full remote. It is, education is staff-intensive. Everyone knows that. There, you, you can't replicate what we do. The human, the human being is needed and necessary. We, of course, are short-staffed given what we need to do for COVID. Element, you know, when we had these conversations with the, with the parents and the community, I was very candid and said, "Look, we've had three or four lunch monitors, you know, posted for, I forget how much time at this point, but we're going to repost them, but we're going to need to have people apply and to be lunch monitors, quite frankly." It's, we just, again, we just don't have the sheer number of bodies to do everything, and everyone says, "Well, you don't have as many kids." You're right, but we're also having to space out and do things very, very differently than we, than we've ever had before. So it is going to be a matter of staffing. To the safety part, if I may, real quick, I understand that the concern from what I can, I can gather is that you'll have X amount of kids in one space at six feet with no masks. Okay, so it, the, the question becomes, well, that poses, that potentially poses a risk back for the, you know, for the teacher or for someone who may be doing lunch duty, et cetera. The fact is, though, the adults will never have their masks off. So it, my, my point is that one could argue that there could be schools, you know, a school-related case of transfer, right? Because if, you know, if you're in one spot and people are breathing and talking and like we're talking about right now with Thanksgiving, et cetera, then, okay, but it, it doesn't, that does not necessarily translate back to, you know, being unsafe for staff, as long as folks are still taking the same precautions that we have diligently throughout, you know, since September. So, and I've asked those questions directly, not only to the Board of Health, but to my, to the, to my colleagues, and I'm going to knock on wood because I have the worst, we all, we have the worst luck ever. Every time I say something, it seems like, you know, it happens, but we have not had a school-related transmission. I don't believe we've had a school-related transmission in any of the schools around us. I could be wrong about that. I really don't keep track of everyone else, but I don't believe there has been many, if, if anything at all. So I think we're, I think we're in good, I think we're in good hands. I think we have a, we have a solid plan. I certainly would look forward to folks' feedback, but lunch is going to happen. We're going to do so, you know, cautiously and when it's appropriate. But that, that's, that idea or that, you know, moving, moving forward is just not going to go away.
Thank you. And I think it's, that's an important message is, is the whole, this whole time, our plan has been to move towards serving lunch. So we, we need to determine, you know, what are the logistics around doing that? Is it safe? So thank you for getting your team together to try and put those logistics around that, making lunch happen, bringing the Board of Health, and we look forward to when we have the opportunity to come in and see what it would look like so that we can give you feedback, and more importantly, that the teachers and the staff will be able to see what those plans are as well, and offer feedback. So it's, it's been, it's, it's been an interesting couple of weeks, so I'm going to turn it back to you to kind of go into what's going on and some of the other.
Yes, so when we last left our heroes, last week, we were, you know, we were buoyed by the fact that we had come out of another remote, and we were, you know, we were kind of, you know, moving back into what is now a normalcy. The weekend didn't start off that great, quite frankly. We, we started off with, you know, the notification of a positive to a fourth-grade member of our, you know, fourth-grade community member. And that created, of course, a lot of the case tracing, which our nurses do, and and then on or about, well, Monday morning at some point, Monday after, no, it was Monday, late Monday morning, we were notified of a member of our sixth-grade community who tested positive. So you know, these letters that I put out, I realize have kind of a kind of a rubber stamp kind of feel to them. They almost look like a, you know, a form letter, and because we're, you know, we're putting out so many letters, like, there's only so many ways I can say that we have, you know, a positive. But I, this letter that we sent out yesterday was different because I wanted to make sure that folks understood, you know, the reasonings behind why, why we make the decisions that we make. And as I put, two positive cases, you know, required the quarantine of, with memory serves, right? Eleven, eleven staff members, twenty-five students, and those are all possible, right? Those are close contacts that now need to be traced and tested and quarantined, et cetera. So in a matter of, well, actually, if you think about it, one business day, one school day, I lost eleven staff members right off the bat. No district has the ability, and what did we do? So we, we did, we just quarantined one grade, quite frankly, and that was, that's going to be the kind of thing that we can do, but once we moved into another grade, it became impossible to, well, again, now we're up to, at that point, I believe it was thirty, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven of close contacts, whatever I had said, so those all, those could potentially have more. So, you know, in consultation with our school doc and Board of Health, we made, you know, we made a decision to do what we did. But, you know, that is the unfortunate reality that's going to, you know, that's going to take place for quite a bit. Here's the good news, quite frankly, is that we did it very quickly. We transitioned from hybrid into full remote within twelve hours. Probably less. I don't remember when my letter went out, but we had already, you know, transitioned from, from that to full remote. Honestly, the, you know, there are a lot of all-stars here, MVPs, but parents absolutely, and granted, they didn't like it. I don't blame them. I think they understood, but they, you know, they were able to adjust. Our, our teachers went right into it. There's no delay, and those are the type of things that we've been quote-unquote "training" for, so to speak. We're able to do that. We don't want to lag time because we don't want kids to, or adults, quite frankly, but just to kind of, you know, kind of hang there for a bit until we can get our act together. Our act is together. We have an excellent hybrid model. We, we have probably one of the stronger, you know, infra, technological infrastructures around, thanks to our tech team and the commitments of so many. So we're able to move in and out pretty, pretty seamlessly. That's good news. Our, our medical team, as our nursing team, worked all weekend. They case-traced and spoke to, I think it was eighty parents. It's eighty parents in three days. That's not easy because there's not like a list. They, they talked to one parent, they figured out, okay, now I got to go to this parent, now I got to go to this person. That's a lot of work over a period of Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. That's what, that's what needs to take place in order for me to be able to make decisions based on what we're going to do next. So is, is, is a fine-tuned machine as you could possibly have in these situations. We have them. We do, we have one. We have it just like this, and we can come in and out. I feel bad for parents. I feel bad for the, I feel bad for our students. We still have Patrick here online, Callie and Abby are still with us, I think. And the fact of the matter is that they, you know, a lot of the stuff that they want to do are being, we had sports planned, we had games planned. This was the last week of athletics for fall one season. All of that was canceled. It, it, these are just, you know, just one disappointment. We had crazy hair day, for gosh sakes. I mean, if, if we can't have a crazy hair day, folks, I mean, where, where are we at? But these are the things that it seems like one disappointment after another. And our kids and our staff are handling this, but in one of those letters, it says, "Being stressed beyond belief." I can absolutely vouch for that. Our teachers are incredibly stressed. Our parents are stressed. Our kids are stressed. It is, it's, they are working harder than they ever had before because, you know, not for nothing, you know, it took Ford Motor Company quite a long time to switch from making cars into respirators, and thankfully they did. It took my teachers two weeks. Two weeks, we changed the learning model. I'm going to say to you that if, if there's better out there, let me know. Quite frankly, our teachers changed to a completely different model in two weeks, and that just doesn't happen, just on a day-to-day basis. So but it's an incredibly amount of work, and so we're trying to be as consistent as possible, but we have to be safe. And so our goal is to come back into school every time. We need to get our kids back into school. We need to get our teachers back in school. We need longer time in school. It, you know, we know that's what's the best, but, you know, we're going to need some help again, and where do we need help? So folks, again, complaining, and so I, I answered as many questions as I possibly could. We need substitutes. Miss LaFrenia was looking for one teacher for an hour and a half, and a substitute, one substitute for an hour and a half, which didn't come to fruition because we went full remote. If it takes an hour and a half to find one substitute, and I need eleven, let's just, let's just say, it's not going to happen. We, we need a bit, we need a bigger pool of subs. Every time this happens, I say, I say something to them, say, "Where, where can I sign up to be a sub?" I say again, "It's on our school district website. Everything can be done right from there. Susan Barney will be in touch. We need substitute teachers." And so the more substitute teachers we have, the, the even more flexible we can be when we have these situations either by grade or by building or whatever the case is, and we'll be able to keep moving forward. So our update is this, we're getting better at coming in and out of remote. That's not a good thing, I guess, because we don't want to come into remote. We will because it's important. And so that's, that's the, that's, it's, it's in order to keep everyone safe. So we're doing better at that, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I would imagine community members must be asking new questions or, you know, from the listservs or anything to that effect.
Thank you, Dr. Kazivan. I have a question or a comment, but I would love for you to address it. As these cases start to creep up on us, I know communications have gone out in the past, but let's, let's talk about if my, my child or my family contracts COVID, it gets a positive test, who do I call?
So it would be, the easiest thing that I would say to that is to call the main office. And, and we will find if it's not the building principal or the school nurse or the nurse leader, that's how that would go. We do, we, we receive a lot of, we receive a lot of information from parents, and parents have been fantastic. So parents will either send us an email if, if it's like during the weekend, let's say, or it's at night, or they'll call the main office. We really what I'm, to make it easy is just to call that main office or send an email from the website, and we will, we will take it from there. We'll, you know, we'll put you in touch with the right person. And, you know, granted, in the very beginning, there were lots and lots of emails, and it was hard to answer all of them. But now they've kind, we've kind of fallen into a groove, and so when we do receive it, it's a lot easier to, you know, to, to move them to wherever we need to be, but to make it simple, just call that main off, your call or email, you know, the, the office. To make it simple, just call that main off, your call or email, you know, the, the office.
Great, thank you. Anyone on the committee have any questions or comments for Dr. Kazvent?
Chris, I have a quick question, Chris, regarding the, in particular, the lunch stuff. I know that one of the big concerns that I've heard, and I did see it in the letters, was the. The turnover or the cleaning between shifts, lunch, lunch shifts like that. Can you just talk a little bit about that? I know that because of the COVID, we have reduced staffing and stuff like that, and I know Rick has some, some. The spraying equipment and things like that, could you just talk about how we're going to clean it and, and how that happens?
So the. When we went through kind of our mock, you know, lunch, you know, the cafeteria monitors, for example. They play, you know, you see cafeteria monitors mostly at the elementary level, but. They play a big part in helping wipe down tables. So we wouldn't spray, we could, we could spray them, we could do that with the solvent, which is, you know, healthy, but we, we would just wipe them down. Or depending on the, because if I'm thinking about the middle and high school, there's no reason why that spray can't be sprayed in the. And the student can, can wipe down their area, but either one. You can go, I don't think we have enough. We don't, we don't have enough. Tables yet to go every other, so what a lot of folks do is they, they took student desks. And let's say I've got, I've got six student desks. Okay, and by the way, every spot would be some, some kid's spot for the year for case tracing, so in other words. Cassavant up front to the left, and the next lunch would be, you know, Geister. And the next, you know, they'd be, you only sit in certain spots, but. You would go every other, so in other words, I would sit in, in chair, you know, in seat one. And then when the next lunch comes in, six feet later over there is seat two, that's where lunch two starts, and then I have an opportunity to clean seat one. We, you know, we probably, you know, thinking about all that, we don't have enough tables, chairs, and all that stuff to do that, but. We, we don't have a lot of people in our lunches right now anyway. I think it's, gosh, maybe Enry, you can remember some of these numbers, but maybe sixty in the calf and maybe forty or fifty in the, in the. In the gymnasium, that's not a lot of kids when you're used to seeing two hundred and two hundred and fifty kids, okay? So we have all of our cafeteria staff, lunches will already be pre-made, there'll be no line, so those folks will be available to us to. To help clean, so we've got a pretty good plan when it comes to that.
Thank you, Chris.
Anyone else on the committee have any questions or comments for Dr. Kazvent? Just, just so that we make a statement. Obviously, with going full remote, everything has been paused. I know that the athletic season was really ending anyway. I believe that on Friday was the last day. I know we've got the, what is it, winter, winter one, I forget what they're calling all these seasons. So I assume once we get back into school, some kind of notification will be sent out. As to what the status of which sports and whatnot will happen at that, at that point in time.
Yeah, I just got off a meeting yesterday about ice hockey, quite frankly, so yesterday and, and basketball, and. So Friday, Friday, they will, the state slash MIAA will. Push out kind of the, how will basketball look, and what, just like they did for fall one. With the big packet of information about how each sport would work in fall, they're going to put one out. For basketball, hockey, and I know there's one more sport, but I cannot think about it, I can't think of it right now. Of course, it's coming at a bad time right now. And a lot of folks in this area, superintendents, etc., are, are starting to, and school committees are starting to. You know, think about what is, if it's, if it's feasible or not, quite honestly. But what we, what we're led to believe right now, and we won't know until Friday. Is that most of these sports will have zero fans, zero spectators. And, you know, basketball, hockey, we don't, that's not all written in stone, but we don't know what the rules look like, but. They're still pushing forward. And, you know, we'll see. Basketball and hockey were the two, were two sports that folks were worried about the most when, even when we were back this summer, so I, you know, we'll, we'll have to figure it out.
Great, thank you. And just a follow-up to our meeting that we had last Thursday where we had that wonderful report from our consultant on the HVAC and the ventilation. I don't know if you have any want to give on, I know we were looking for a bid and some other things, if you had anything that you wanted to add to that at this point?
So we put out the, we put out the request for quotes and. The, it was, we determined through that process that. That the Mike Neto, who you had met. His company, you know, had the most desirable bid, so they're actually going to start Wednesday. Tomorrow, as a matter of fact. And as promised and as, as, as detailed, they're going to start with those seventeen rooms right off the bat. Now that we have that, and, you know, we have that moving forward, I'm going to send the report over to both towns. And, you know, certainly speak with, you know, Templeton about the green communities piece and. The things moving forward. I don't know that we have an update on the Maya Grant. I'd look to Enry for that, but she would have, she would have told us if, if we, yeah. So we haven't got any word on that yet, but we're still going to move forward because we, we need to fix the, you know, the actuators and the pieces that need to be. Fixed, as we discussed, so we're, we're moving forward with that, and that's, that's a great thing.
Great, thank you. Okay, I think we'll talk about instructional updates, etc. I know, Ms. Kalish, you're going to talk to us, to us a little bit about that later. I think we've covered everything COVID, I'm sure we haven't covered everything COVID-related. But the, the important things that we, we needed to go over this evening, was there anything, any other school committee member had questions or comments? Or wanted to know something else about our plans? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which was a strategic plan update. And I know when we initially talked about this, we were like, yep, we're ready to do it. I know some things have gotten busy. And I just didn't know if Dr. Kazvent, you were prepared to talk about a strategic plan update today or not?
Well, thanks to Ms. Kate Kalish, we are, quite frankly, so. We've, we haven't done a lot of work to it because, but we, we have tried to tweak it as best as we can. Given what we're in, because again, when we made this, you know, a pandemic wasn't even, you know, no one even thought of it about a pandemic, so. I'm really going to turn it over to Kate and kind of give her kind of a quick overview, and if you have any questions about, you know, direction or. Pace, etc., that, that'd be the, you know, we can go from there.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen, which has the. Update on it. I, I wanted to just start at the top and say. Our vision has really served us well throughout this pandemic. We, our mission, excuse me, we had worked on this, you know, together as a group, and then, as you know, with various partners, and. Our mission is the NRSD is committed to providing a physically and emotionally safe learning environment that promotes academic success, responsible relationships, and civic engagement. And that couldn't have served us better, having that mindset as we move forward with our plans during these times. So. As you know, we've done this before, I'm sorry for scrolling and making you dizzy. In April, I made updates in red, so these updates are in purple, I didn't want to lose our red updates, I'm going to scroll again. And you can see that we have three strategic objectives, and under those, we have five strategic initiatives. So I am going to go kind of column by column. And just share some. Work that we've been doing. So the first strategic initiative is around implementing standards-based curriculum maps. And the outcome was that by the spring of 2020, we'd be using maps, maps to guide our teaching. I'm going to skip the red because we've talked about that, but. This project has been repurposed a little bit to allow teachers to adjust instructional calendars. In light of our hundred seventy day hybrid learning model to prioritize learning standards, so rather than. Continue to or to finish writing some curriculum maps that. Really don't fit the circumstances right now with a hundred seventy days and hybrid and sometimes remote. We really have to prioritize because of the face time that we have with kids, what standards we're teaching, and so teachers have worked on those instructional calendars to do that work. Another thing that we. Did in this area around curriculum is that we had. Previously purchased into reading for grade K to five, and we've expanded that to. Into literature for six and seven with the online component only because they really needed that online in order to. To teach in the manner that they have to in grade six and seven, so that really wasn't. It's new to grade six and seven, but it's part of the, the extension of that. Original purchase that has served us so well. And then this one here, by the spring of 2021, will have some history maps written, so again. Teachers have been working on this in grades six to nine to align their curriculum to the new standards because there's a significant, as you know. Civics component among other changes. In the grades and. As you know, we did purchase, we talked about this, I think, at academic subcommittee, a history curriculum for grades five through eight, so that has really helped with that curriculum work there. So that's in, in pretty good shape, actually. The next one is around research-based instructional practices, we had done some work on this. What really I, I wanted to highlight here, which is kind of a good byproduct of our circumstances. Is that as a result of the learning that was required throughout the district by teachers at all grade levels. We've, they really have learned and continue to learn new strategies to effectively utilize teaching tools remotely. And in person, and using technology, which is really kind of a side benefit that they've been on a, you know, steep learning curve. It's been stressful, but they really have risen to that, and we've done our best to support them by providing the training that they need. And this has moved the teachers along the SAMR model, which I just want to show you this graph, this. Graphic, thank you, sorry, of the SAMR model, so when districts adopt technology. Often, they follow this progression. First, they use the technology just as a substitution, a direct substitute. They were doing a worksheet on paper, now they're doing a worksheet on using the technology. Then they move to augmentation where it, it might still be a direct substitute, but it functionally improves that product. After that is modification where the technology actually allows you to significantly redesign your task because of the technology. And last is redefinition, which is where the technology helps you to create new tasks that previously you might not have even thought of. And I think a fair number of our teachers have really moved up in this model. It's not, it's not something where every single minute, every time you're in a class that you would. Maybe be at the modification level or the redefinition level, but teachers are really using the technology. In, in these more refined ways, so I think that has been a side benefit. That has really helped us in this area of research-based instructional practices. The next area is using our multi-tiered system of support to provide interventions for students, and we had a. A goal of using Star Reading and, and Star Math assessments K to eight, and we've actually exceeded that goal. Because of COVID, we really needed to extend that to twelfth grade, and so we have. Implemented Star Reading and Star Math assessments K to twelve, and all teachers. Completed the beginning of year, that's what BOY is, administration of those, so we have data from, from the beginning of, well, from this month, let's say, right? Or the month previous to now, which is our beginning of year administration to really look at what gaps. Students might have as a result of our spring closure and, and going in and out of remote and so forth, so that's a really terrific tool. I have to give a shout out to, I don't know if they're still here, but I have to give a shout out to the high school because. They took this task of implementing this assessment in reading and in math. For grades eight through twelve, really, and they had never done it before, and they accomplished it. Very expeditiously and very professionally, so that was awesome. In addition, we have special ed staff, English language staff, and. Teachers who are on student assistance teams using some of the data that we get from that. The next one is similar, but instead of academic, using tiered supports for social emotional. And we had, by the spring of 2020, that was, you know, when we went remote, right? That we would expand this system to include social emotional learning and supports for students. And the district really has expanded its clinical and student support teams. In addition, this really should be a separate bullet. Templeton Elementary teachers this fall received training on trauma-informed practices, which. Are very relevant because the persistent stress of the COVID situation has, you know, causes difficulties. This, we're on target for this, which is terrific as well. By the spring of 2021, we wanted a data cycle of inquiry where we were using data to look at social emotional learning and behavior needs. And the district is in the process of implementing a social emotional learning survey that's going to be done three times this year. The first time is in the coming couple of weeks. All teachers throughout the district will do this survey about. A set of students, so they'll, they do the survey for each student, but they'll each have like a set of twenty students to do. And then in addition, all students in grades seven through twelve complete the survey for themselves to. Answer regarding their own social emotional status and needs. And then we'll use that data to think about supports that we can provide for our students. You know, this winter, and then we'll repeat the, the survey in mid-year, and then at the end of the year to kind of help us to improve those practices. So that's, that's really terrific, and I would say that, that's really. You know, kudos should go to Matt Holloway and Ashley Niggle in the Student Support Office for bringing that survey to. Implementation. And then the last one is around communication, and. The administrative team will be working on this in December through, you know, the winter times, December through February. We've certainly had lots of clear. Communication and lots of communication, but because the need for communicating has been so great. That actually putting down a formal process on paper has kind of taken a backseat. So that's pretty much it for our five initiatives, you know, within these three objectives.
Great, thank you for that update. Is there anyone on the committee who have any questions or comments? And unfortunately, I can't see everyone, so just feel free to unmute yourself and.
I'll stop sharing so you can have a bigger screen.
Thank you. Anyone with comments or questions? I will make one then, again, thank you for putting the update together. I know when we initially started with the planning for the pandemic back in, in March. We had a lot of conversations around our ability to. Follow those objectives and initiatives in our strategic plan and what would it do to us. And I, I say that purposely because it was doing something to us, this, this pandemic, to prevent us from reaching those goals, so it really looks like. We've been able to take the situation we're in and apply it to those initiatives, which. To me, it says that we actually created a strategic plan that's flexible and pertinent to this district. So I want to just congratulate you again on putting such a well-thought plan out together, and of course. As your school committee is approving it, of course, we're wonderful too, but thank you for doing all the hard work. thank you for doing all the hard work. Um I think it really speaks to the fact that we have a thumb really on the pulse of what this district needs.
Yeah.
The steps we need to get there. Um and it's it's exciting to hear some of the modifications and changes that we have been able to exceed some of the the goals we set for ourselves. So thank you for that. We look to hearing a lot more, um especially interested um once um Matt Holloway and his team have a chance to look at that social emotional information. Hear some feedback from that because I think we I've heard everybody on this committee and everyone that I've spoken to and administration and staff speak to the fact that social emotional is huge, not just for the students, but for our our entire staff and the community. So it'll be interesting to hear some of the feedback that we get from doing those um, you know, assessments and what strategy.
I I agree. And I I think that um the fact that we stayed more or less on target with our plan is really a testament to the fact that our plan reflects what we believe in about learning and what we believe in about our district. And so that doesn't change based on the circumstances.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll we'll keep this on the agenda every, um, you know, few months for updates. So um, we look forward to hearing more um as we continue to make progress against those initiatives. No, uh, let's see. Let my page. Sorry. Okay. Next up, um, school committee comments. Is there any any other comments from the school committee on anything at this point? Okay, seeing none, uh, we will. I'm sorry, Mrs. Kozel. Yes.
Can you hear me? Am I coming through?
Yes, you are.
All right. Just want to thank everybody for all the hard work. I'm pretty proud of our district and brag about it to a lot of people. So thank you, teachers, administration, all the staff custodians. Nice job.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozel. Um, any anyone else want to say anything? Okay, so we'll move on at this point. Surplus items, there were none uh to be had for this meeting, so we'll pass over that. We have one item, the student activity fee approval for non-athletics. When we met, I think, two meetings ago, Dr. Kazivant had recommended that we not charge an athletic fee. In further discussion, we said, you know, there are a few other non-athletic related events or organizations or activities that we normally charge some sort of participation fee. So I'm just going to turn it over to Dr. Kazivant for a recommendation um as to how we should handle those particular situations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So um there there are few and far between, um but they would be things like or activities like like the band or it's funny because we just had this conversation, uh, I think it was a year ago or two years ago, to actually charge your fee to, for example, to be part of the play or the band or gosh, I'm I'm starting to to forget some others, but there are very few extracurricular activities that we would that we would actually charge because they have an advisor. Okay, so it's not just we're just charging because we can. Yeah, there's it's an advisor and it's generally um generally it's time intensive, et cetera, et cetera. So again, I think we were just, I was concentrated on sports as we were trying to get that out of the door, but um, we have had interest in a, um, I'm going to get this name wrong, Ms. Lyons, and if you're listening, I apologize, but it's the virtual um a virtual, uh, oh, gosh, Abby, do you know if you remember Abby Bennett, if you're if you're listening right now, I won't say it's the it's not a virtual play, but they've got something planned in which they will do something virtually like a play. Maybe it's virtual play. I don't know. Um, but those those are things that we are still going to try to do, but we're certainly not going to um or we don't want to. I'm not recommending that we um charge a user fee because again, much of this may be dependent on whether or not we are um in school or not. So just like athletics and I'll be I'll come before you again, for winter one sports, once we kind of figure out what, you know, how that's going to, you know, come about for your, you know, for recommendations or with a recommendation in regards um to user fees for that as well.
Hi, if you'd like me to add in the um theater program, we're trying to do like a Zoom reading of A Christmas Carol or um try to do something like that. Um, we've been trying to have like some Zoom drama club meetings. So we've been talking about independent projects that, you know, maybe we can present to the student body and community later on.
Great. Thank you for that input, Abby. That's wonderful. I hope we can get them all done. Okay, so based on Dr. Kazivant's recommendation, um that we would not charge user or participation fees um for these types of events. And I I'm going to apologize because I forget what what timeframe did you call it? Winter? I forget what they're they're calling all these. You're muted.
Winter one, I believe. Um, and then it would be fall two after winter one because that'll have football in it. So um uh, but yes, we're talking about winter one. Talking about a fall one.
Okay, so winter one. So based upon Dr. Kazivant's recommendation, I would entertain a motion to approve the um non-collection of any fees associated with non-athletic activities for the winter one session.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Marks. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second by Mrs. Trifalo. Are there any questions or comments um about the user fees? None, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kozel?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Hughes, oh, sorry, Mrs. Trifalo?
Yes.
Had my finger over your name, sorry. And Mrs. Hughes says yes. Um, so that was unanimous. So we will not um collect any sort of user or activity fees for the winter one session and we will review it um when it comes closer to fall two, I believe, is what it's called, um, which is in the winter. So but we'll readdress it when it gets closer to the next session. So thank you for that. Next up, we have the Keystone Educational Cooperative uh membership. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Kazivant and probably Mrs. Geister to discuss what this means and what it would do for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So um as uh Matt Holloway, our people personnel um director, presented the idea of joining what has been commonly known as FLAC but is 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 rebranded or changed its name to a Keystone. And that's another collaborative. Um, just when I say just like caps, it's it's a collaborative. And simply what that does, uh, some of the services that um the Keystone can offer really, uh, it it just gives us another option and there there will certainly be some price. There'll be some money savings there by joining that collaborative as well. Many of our districts, uh, surrounding districts here are are part of both CAPS and FLAC, pardon me, Keystone. So it would require, it would require, I guess, myself to be on the um on the board of directors or or a lucky school committee member um to be um on the board of directors. It's uh, it's the same as uh the requirements for um CAPS collaborative. Yes, Matt Holloway can in fact sit in. I would say occasionally, I I would think would be the the key word there. But it it does need to have a the superintendent or a very, very, very lucky school committee member um as part of its board. So I recommend that we um I I recommend that we uh we that you entertain the idea for Keystone. I think it's a great opportunity for us and um and there'll certainly be some cost savings to that.
Great. I can yeah, I can just talk about the cost savings. It's a $2,500 yearly membership fee, but we had, we we have a spreadsheet that shows it, but it didn't get attached to the agenda. With the current students that we have there, even after paying the $2,500 membership fee for the year, we would have a $35,000 savings by spending the 2,500.
Right. That kind of seems like a, I hate to say no-brainer, but there's definitely, it's a win-win for the additional supports. Because I know we spoke about this in administrative academic meeting, um just Matt had spoken about the professional development they may offer and some other really great things. But the dollar savings obviously is uh very good, uh, right up front. Any questions from the committee on the collaborative? So seeing none, and I'm going to certainly do it after we make a motion, I would entertain a motion to seek membership in the Keystone Education Cooperative.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mrs. Kozel. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from Mrs. Trifalo. Any questions or comments um on that? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Kozel?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Trifalo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So that was unanimous. So thank you for um, you know, to to Matt Holloway for bringing that to our attention. Once we get the paperwork filled out and are formally accepted into the cooperative, we can then address the appointment of either Dr. Kazivant, because it looks like he really wants to do it, um, or the lucky school committee member um that would be assigned to the board. So thank you so much. All right. There are no other items um that came up within 48 hours. I'm going to go to the superintendent report and I'll turn this over to Dr. Kazivant to talk about a few other things that we have left to talk about.
Sure. So and I'll keep it quick. So um I know that we folks have been looking for a staff listing because, you know, new staff and and I believe Ms. Geister put, I I don't know if it tasked her, she has it. I, we were kind of talking back and forth earlier, so I'll kind of just put a pin in that. One of the things that I want to uh run by uh the committee, uh quite frankly, is that um we talked about this in academic, in our academic subcommittee, is that you know, we felt horrible for our seniors last year because we were really blindsided, you know, here comes March and then, of course, nothing, nothing happened, uh, quite frankly. And so as we barrel through, you know, 2020 into, you know, 21, our seniors, you know, we don't know, quite frankly, what we'll be able to do um in terms of what uh was considered typical you know, celebratory uh senior stuff. But as juniors, you start really fundraising. Um, as many of you know, you really start fundraising for your senior year um as a junior. You start seriously start to fundraising as a junior. So when some of the traditional things that we, you know, we've uh we've done, um, we do normally or we have meat raffles, et cetera. Well, none of those things, of course, took place. So our current seniors, the class of 21, um are, you know, financially, and this is no fault of their own, because they've had no opportunity to do any of their typical fundraisers, um, sit in a hole, really financially in a hole, uh, quite honest. And and yes, the class have dues and they and they pay dues, um, you know, for gowns and caps and gowns, pardon me, and et cetera. But what we want to do, um, and and Mr. Uh, Mr. Young has done a great job with, you know, taking a yearbook to, you know, folks to task and not not our yearbook, I'm talking about the company, et cetera. So because we've been doing some things for a while traditionally, um, and that, you know, that we we need to rely on financially. So what what I want to, uh, what I'm, what I'm considering, I start, I talked with Ms. Fliss uh for quite some time is that she, they have two really great ideas coming out. And but what she's been very, very cognizant to do is not to ask our local businesses, because, you know, local businesses are hurting, you know, we were trying to and also, you know, our community is hurting. This is not a time to, you know, to really be uh going out and, you know, and being the bushes for monies. But we we also have a lot of other organizations and we've talked about this, I think, um uh, you know, a couple of times since, you know, in my tenure about the timing of fundraising. You know, so like, you know, you're buying a pie one minute and then, you know, somebody's coming at you with, which I'm I'm happy to buy any pies, brownies or anything like that. I'm I'm game. Girl Scout cookies, whatever the case is, you know, I'm I'm good. But when it comes to the school type of, uh, you know, fundraisers, what I what I want to do is really put um a moratorium on all fundraising with the not the ones that are currently going on. So let me just, you know, I know that we're selling wreaths and you know, uh, you know, those type of things which we've done, you know, in terms of boot to clubs. I want to put a moratorium on any type of fundraising moving forward, except for the senior class. Um, I think that the message is this. That whatever we're going to do, you know, you know, school sometime, you know, many people, to many people, school really exists for the 12th grade. Right? So when you come to graduate, that's that's the job, right? That's our job. That's their job. It's our job. We get them from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade and you graduate. They really, when we talk about the high school being the flagship, we're really talking about the the 12th grade. Um, it's all about them, right? That's the celebration. I don't know what the celebration is going to look like this year. No one does. And what we'll be able to do, but whatever we do or whatever we're able to do, I want to focus whatever limited resources we have to them, to the seniors. Um, and not ta- and not put folks in a position to um you know, with multiple fundraisers for lots of, and yes, there's a, there's a need everywhere. There's no doubt, but I I want to, I want to put that out there and uh to the school committee because I we really are here for the, in in a sense, we're here for everybody, but it's we do want to make sure that we honor these seniors the best way we can, and they're trying their very best, but they just don't have a lot of opportunity, just given um everything that's going on.
Comments from the committee on that? Seeing none, I'll I'll offer just, um, I I think that sounds like a very good plan. We need to be committed to, as you said, to all the students. But knowing, and of course, I had a myself, and I know Mrs. Matson, we had two students that graduated last year um and all the things they didn't have. And I always said, I felt for the next class coming up because they're, they were going to have more challenges. And I I think that's certainly true. I think that if we pulled the committee when the time comes, you know, our commitment to supporting the senior class and any other class that had a need, of course, um, you know, would we we'd be right there. So um I think the only thing that I would say is, you know, once we get a plan in place of, a- and I know everything is fluid because we don't know what we're going to be allowed to do. You know, whatever the the committee needs to do to support that and ensure that whatever we can do, that we'll be able to fund properly and not put an additional burden on not just the students, but, you know, every time there's a fundraiser, our staff is always right there. You know, buying everything, um, the parents and the community members, you know, whatever we can do, just let us know. Um, and we'll figure out how to get that done. So thank you.
Yep. And I think that um, again, it's a it's a great class. They're working hard. I just, you know, we want to just focus whatever energies we have on them um at this point in time, in in terms of fundraising. By the time we speak next, which will be sometime in December, I I would imagine, what what I hope will be posted, I don't hope, but it's it's just part of the we're going to have to do it. Mike Wakefield is going to retire um sometime and at the end of March. Um, and um, to his credit, I believe he's been here 22, 23 years, Henry. I I'm gonna um around, yeah.
Yeah, he's been here since 1995, I believe.
Right. So um, he's, you know, we, it's, it's, it's not hard. It's impossible, quite frankly, to replace that type of institutional knowledge, but we're going to try our best. And what we've done is we've been, we've been talking with Mike for at least a year, um, or just this through this entire process. So true to form, you know, we spoke of, you know, at length about the the process. And so what we're going to do is we're going to post his position, we're going to post this position and um at or about, probably right after the holiday, right after uh, right after Thanksgiving. Um, we're going to, again, through the school committee, we're going to look at a refurbished and an updated um job description that we've been working on with Mike. And at that point, what we'll do, uh, after the, probably after the Christmas break, uh, so around that timeframe, we'll start the um the process of into, you know, seeking candidates, whittling down, you know, interviews and moving forward, so that there's time for transition with Mike, whoever the person might be, Mike, to really kind of spill the tea. I'll try to be cool here for a minute. And really to talk about what, you know, what kind of the things are moving forward. So I didn't want that to be a come as a surprise, or, I mean, we've been talking about it so much in central office that that it's, you know, it's really kind of, really kind of matter of fact, but it's, it's, it's a big deal. But we're going to do our very best to get out in front of it and you'll start seeing posts and we'll obviously review the the job description moving forward.
Great. Thank you for letting us know that. And we'll look forward to hearing more from you as you get the logistics of the replacement and getting the job posted and share that with the committee. So thank you.
So the last thing real quick, and I don't know who has the the con here, but if I could, if I could have the screen for a minute, one of the things that we've been talking about are October 1 numbers. And and it's interesting because, well, I'll just kind of, hopefully, hopefully this works. We'll see. So, yep. Well, I gotta move this little bar though. So if I do a kind of a year-over-year comparison, this is FY '21, although there is FY '20. So FY '20 last year, just to kind of give you an idea, you know, we had a district total, okay, to include school choice, et cetera, of 1, you know, 1,482 right on October 1st. And that number is a snapshot and we keep that number and we use that number, you know, moving, moving forward. Does the, does the number change? You say October 2nd, yes. But we really keep this, you know, we're, we focus on the October 1 number. So Chelsea Mason, who is doing a fantastic job, not only as a new mom, but during all this enrollment information, so I try not to call her too much, but she, she provided this for us and so as you, whoops, I don't need a dictionary, I don't think. Let's look up a new word. You know, we're at 1345. So, you know, what you see right off the bat, I mean, simple math will tell you that, you know, you had 1482. You had, you know, you now have, you know, 13, you know, 85. Some of those obvious numbers that you'll see is that we are about roughly, give or take 50 kids short, school choice. We're down, we have, well, we did at that moment in time, 200. When you start looking at residents, you see 160 residents for Phillipston, you see 95, 985, pardon me, for Templeton. And when you, I have to move this bar again. Sorry, folks. I'm trying not to get anything. You, you know, when you start talking about 1049 versus 985, that's, that's quite a jump. You know, 180 to 160. So where have these kids gone? Well, we've talked about this before, quite frankly, and we have 110, give or take, school, pardon me, homeschool. So, you know, on a normal year, we generally have 50, 55, give or take. So you add those 55 or 50 some odd kids back into this mix and you start, you know, you start looking at, you know, you start seeing the numbers, you know, creep up to what they were. But yeah, we're, you know, it's, it's quite a departure from where we were last year at this time. Many districts are in the same boat. Where did they go? Again, a lot has, you know, a lot has to do with, with homeschool. Why? Well, not so much for districts who are held harmless, quite frankly, but the, the bigger concern is that when they start, you know, when you start trying to figure out your, you know, your foundation, you know, budget or your foundation enrollment number, you know, you, you need, they do not count towards that. And you do not receive any monies for, for students whom are either going to private schools or are homeschooled. So last month, I believe we talked about the fact that the state is going to look at maybe creating a second opportunity to capture what, you know, what your, what your enrollment is, and being somewhere around in March or April, when things start to settle down, we don't know. We'll have to see, quite frankly, but it's, it's quite a draw. And, you know, I spoke to Chelsea very briefly today and I can see that she, she just posted the the November report that we, monthly, as you know, we have a student enrollment report. And she had simply just said to me, there was quite a bit of movement in the month of November. I don't know what that means, quite frankly. But the snapshot for any type of, you know, for all of our, for all intents and purposes for the budget, you know, have, you know, have been generated. So what does this leave us? Well, you know, we, we certainly, we didn't take any school choice kid, as everyone knows, except for six. So, you know, you know, that's, that was by design. We've had a lot of kids, we've, we talked about this quite a bit, is that folks have moved who are, they were schooled, they were here and wanted to stay at school choice, but they couldn't, under normal conditions, we would have done that, right? We would have just school choiced them in place, as they call it. We did not do that. And we didn't, you know, we didn't replace the school choice numbers from, that leave every year through the senior class or or those who are school choiced here, who then go to money tech from other towns, right? So we always, we talked about this a lot last year. So you know, it is, when I say it is what it is, that's, that's your enrollment. You know, that's, that's what we'll do. The percentages is interesting. Oops. Well, I won't share it again, but the percentages, give or take, stay the same, roughly, give or take. You know, that kind of that, people like to use that 80/20 type of, you know, kind of roundabout name. It's, you know, it's more, it's a little bit, it's, it's, it's certainly a little bit different than 80/20, but give or take one or two percentage points, it's about the same. So you know, that's, I think a lot of districts are in the same boat. I don't, I don't know that until I see there, until they start publishing those type, you know, the reports.
Right. Thank you for the update. I mean, obviously, the two things that strike a, I'll say a nerve, you know, one, just the residential reduction in numbers. And I think you've explained that. And then, of course, our school choice numbers. And I think it bears being said once again that this district has lived off of its school choice for the past, I don't know, six, seven, eight years, whatever it's been. And this is concerning. It was strategic and I understand that. But it is something that we need to address, because if we continue to see a reduction in the number of school choice students, that all of the items that get funded with those monies would have to move over to the general fund. And, you know, we've said this multiple times, every single year, and we get to the budget season. But now seeing these numbers where we are seeing the decrease, which we haven't up until this point, this now becomes very important that we let our, our communities understand the potential impact. And we come up with a strategy to decide how we want to handle that going forward. Mrs. Trifalo, I see you unmuted. Yes?
Yes. I'd like to have a request that on the future agenda, we look, we announce or look again at what is funded out of that school choice budget, so that the community really has a real feel for how we've been living off of school choice money.
I think that's a good idea.
Bring that back up. Thank you.
Yeah. And I think that I'm going to jump ahead a little bit because further on, on our agenda, we were going to talk about our next meeting, which was December 2nd, because we've added the second meetings in. And the finance subcommittee met last week and we talked about using that meeting, but not on the 2nd. We wanted to move it to the 9th, just to give us a little more time to focus on finances. And that's probably a good time to spend looking at just that information. So maybe Mrs. Geister, if you could add that, which I'm sure you were going to have that anyway, but we'll make sure that, that we discuss that, you know, right out in front as to what we're using those funds for, so we can get that out in front. So thank you. All right. Anything else, Dr. Kazivan? I know the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, we're, we're getting ready. We were actually meeting tomorrow to just go over housekeeping, so that committee should be kicking off soon. Anything else that you wanted to offer?
No, I think that, I think that pretty much does it.
Great. Next up was a curriculum and instruction update. Ms. Kalise's additional things that you'd like to bring to the committee on curriculum instruction?
I think we pretty much covered it in the strategic improvement plan update.
Great. I think so too. I know one thing that we'd love to see, and we've kind of talked about this in an academic administrative, is we did our star assessments. We'd love to hear some follow-up with any of the data, once you have that and you've had a chance to go through it. And I know you're still working through that, so that would be great. But thank you. All right. Subcommittee and committee reports. I think we've pretty much covered, with exception of policy, where we do have one policy we need to vote on, but I'm just going to go quickly through the list. Academic administrative, Mrs. Trifalo, anything to add?
No, I think you brought that, you brought up what we've discussed throughout the meeting. Thank you.
Finance, Mr. Mason's the chair of that and he's not here, but again, I will talk in just a moment about rescheduling that, that meeting that we had set for the 2nd and go over that. We've just been discussing FY '21 and FY '22. Facilities?
No, we've, we've discussed it. It was, the last meeting we had was very heavy into the COVID stuff, the ventilation and things like that. So I think most of that, most of that has been discussed here in the, in the meetings already.
Great. Policy, Mrs. Kojal? It looks, it looks like you're frozen, but if you want to try, if not, myself or Mrs. Matson? Yeah, I think she's frozen.
My internet is out.
Okay.
It comes and it goes. So do you want to do that presentation for JFABD?
Sure, I'd be happy to. This way you won't get cut off.
Thank you, because it keeps telling me my internet is low. My internet is low, so.
Okay. The policy subcommittee met on, actually, it was yesterday. It feels like it was weeks ago, but it was just yesterday. We had had this policy, JFABD, homeless students enrollment rights and services. It's actually been on our agenda to bring forth, but with COVID, it got lost in the shuffle of things, because there was three policies that needed to be updated, mostly for changes to the SLOs. When we met with Matt Holloway, he brought it up because part of our consolidated performance review, the CPR review, they look at our policies. So this one he noted was, had not been updated. And when we looked at it, we said, oh, this is in the queue. It was actually up next. So this policy is, modifies the reading to, for enrollment rights and services for homeless students, and it updated the language for DESI compliance. This, the highlights of the changes is it expands the definition of the homeless students. It updates transportation guidelines. It adds language to address living arrangements and student privacy. It adds language to cover parental notification on enrollment disagreements. And it updates some district liaison requirements, including staff PD and other support on issues involving homeless students. What the policy subcommittee was asking for the committee to do was to waive the first and second reading process on this, so we could immediately adopt it, so we'd be in compliance with the new regulations. And, and put the revised JFABD policy in place. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to waive the first and second reading process and immediately adopt the updated policy, JFABD, homeless students enrollment rights and services.
So moved.
Okay, I think it was Mrs. Trifalo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And that, I think, was Mrs. Kojal. Any questions or comments on the policy or Mrs. Matson? Did you want to add anything to it? Nope. Okay. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yeah.
Mrs. Trifalo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So we have unanimously adopted the revisions to JFABD as of this evening, so we'll get that updated online for everybody. Next, long-term planning. We had a quick meeting yesterday. Anything you wanted to add, Mrs. Matson? There was really not a lot of discussion. No? Okay. Diversity, equity and inclusion. I believe you guys are meeting tomorrow.
That is correct. Yes.
And then the Templeton Elementary School Building Committee, have there, I don't know if there's been any updates? No, I see. Dr. Kazivan shaking his head. And PMS Building Committee is last, but it leads me to correspondence. I sent a note to the committee just to alert you, but I did want to just reflect the correspondence that some members of our committee received dated November 6th regarding an invitation to attend the next select board meeting. I'm going to read you my letter, but it says, Dear Ms. Hughes, the Board of Selectmen invite you and the other Phillipston members of the Narragansett Regional School Committee to attend its next meeting on Wednesday, November 18th, 2020, at 7:15 PM to discuss matters related to the return of the Phillipston Elementary School to the town, including but not limited to timing of the transfer, responsibility for an exchange of utility counts, security systems, et cetera. Please RSVP to me, et cetera, et cetera. So I know that I spoke with Mrs. Chartier, Mr. Marks and myself. We will be attending the meeting. I did forward, everybody, Phillipston allows everyone to dial in via Zoom, if you'd like to watch the, the meeting. We had sent, just for the record, on November 3rd, based upon our school committee meeting vote on October 21st, we sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen, and this we asked Dr. Kazivan to do from his hand, asking them to reach out and set up a meeting to discuss these things. So my guess is when we meet tomorrow, I'm not sure how much, you know, three members of the committee can speak, because we cannot speak for the full committee. Nor do I think we have most of the information or knowledge to do so. We'll probably end up forwarding them back to Dr. Kazivan to engage in the discussions, but we'll attend and we'll see what they have to say and we'll update the committee afterwards and let you know what happened. All right. So with that being said, we're going to come to the next school committee meeting. Initially, it was on the agenda for December 2nd. We'd like to move that to December 9th and it will be a finance-focused meeting. We'll look to kick off the FY '22 budgeting process. Even though we don't have FY '21 nailed down with the state, we're going to move ahead based on our last finance committee meeting. Dr. Kazivan and Ms. Geister said, you know, they're ready to go with the expense piece of it. So that's where we need to start anyway, and we'll kick that off on December 9th. I will ask Mrs. Barney to send out an invite to everybody and we'll make sure that we have a quorum and whatnot. But if you could please put that on your calendars, December 9th at 5 o'clock. Yep. I don't know if it'll be in person or via Zoom, so we'll, we'll call that as we see it. We'll probably post it via Zoom. And if we can somehow get to be in person, because sometimes when we talk about numbers, that's easier, we'll do so, but we'll, we'll, you know, we'll let you know and take it under advisement as it gets closer. With that, any last comments or questions from anybody? Okay, seeing none. We will be going into executive session this evening. We had initially anticipated possibly coming out for a vote. That will not be happening. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. We lost my place. Or litigation with the NDEA and/or UFCW, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. The meeting will return into open session, I'm sorry, the meeting will not return into public session immediately following. I didn't update my notes. So I would entertain a motion as such, not coming out of executive session, back into public.
Moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Marks. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second by Mrs. Trifalo. Any questions or comments? I will just say thank you to everyone for watching us. I see we do have some people watching on the YouTube stream and hopefully some people are watching on a, on the channel. and hopefully some people are watching on a, on the Channel 8, I believe, in Templeton. I'm not sure what channel this is, in Phillipston. And I thank you for tuning in, and thank you for all of the feedback that we've received. With that being said, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Robashad?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Mat.
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier? Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. So we will now be going into executive session and not coming out in public. So thank you and good night to everybody. And school committee members, we should get an invite to head out to a meeting room. So, thank you.